City Council to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
I'm here.
Councilmember Austin Lane.
Present.
Councilmember Barry.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Councilmember Elrich.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum of the council present. The meeting this evening has been preceded by an executive function session where the council met with the city manager to follow up on her evaluation. Are there any council comments or announcements this evening? Terry?
I would just like to welcome our new city arborist, Todd Bolton, to the city and appreciate having an arborist again.
Yes, I'd like to welcome my daughter, Alana, who is here tonight in her Tacoma Park soccer T-shirt. It's a great program. This is one of the great things about living in Tacoma Park is the volunteer soccer league, which is really fabulous. All the parents and the students and the coaches, volunteers especially. Second thing, I had a conversation with Erwin Mack this morning of the CDA and he mentioned that there was a shooting on Sunday night at the International House of Pancakes. Hopefully it had nothing to do with the menu, but it was a little disturbing to hear that there was this reported incident. And anything, Barb, we could find out about what exactly happened there and who was involved would be helpful. That, of course, is right across the street on New Hampshire from most of Ward 6 and homes 100 yards away from that. And people, of course, will be concerned and will want to know what's happening. And of course, you know, I've had some concerns about that area for a long time as being the scene of a lot of criminal activity in the city and, you know, want some assurance for the people there that everything possible is being done to make sure that it's well patrolled by our department. And if there's any extenuating circumstances about that particular incident, it would be very helpful and useful and important to know. Thanks.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that I heard from an awful lot of people about how much they enjoyed the street festival on Sunday. It certainly appeared to be very well attended and I think the Old Town Business Association did a great job.
All right, seeing nothing else, we will move on to public comments. This is the time on the agenda for comments on items that are not on our special session agenda. That would include items on our work session agenda as well as anything else that you would like to bring to the attention of the council. I'd like to let people know that when they come forward, I ask them to identify themselves and ask you if you can keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you. I see Reno with his hand up.
Reno, 7213 Central Avenue. I have two items tonight. The first one is a question. Has this building ever added a sign regarding Sam Abbott's name?
I'm sorry?
Sam Abbott, there was going to be a sign, this building, Sam Abbott, Community Center.
Yes. I don't think any of the signs have been put up yet, have they?
No. The signage package, Mr. Abagetti, is yet to be bid. That is one of the components of the sign design, if you will.
The one thing I would point out, looking at this agenda and other items from the city, the references to the community center auditorium. Am I correct that that should be the Sam Abbott Community Center Auditorium?
There is, I think the decision was to use the term "community center" to refer to the entire complex, including this building and the library. And then the Sam Abbott referred to this floor, which was the community space within that.
And here we are on this floor. Might I suggest that in the future this be referred to Sam Abbott Community Center Auditorium? The other item that I wanted to discuss, the last time I was in here was, I think, in May, and I talked about what was going on with Washington Adventist Hospital in regard to Columbia Union College and the interlocks between the board and the possibility of that institution, that second institution, becoming part of the move. I talked about making a letter available, indeed did make a, there was a letter made available by Mark Elrich that the council might even use as a template suggesting that the city council become involved in some way in that discussion. Was a letter ever sent regarding that to Columbia Union College Board, Washington Adventist Hospital?
Suggesting what now? I'm sorry, I'm not remembering what the previous conversation was.
Let me go back on the issue. We have a hospital that has made clear its intent on moving. On April 26th, in the Gazette, the Columbia Union College president, college district, it was the headline, "Wisbe says rumors about a move for the college began circulating after Washington Adventist Hospital announced relocation plans." And that was built upon the fact that there were rumors of a commission which was assessing the possibilities of the college or the college being reconstructed or reorganized as a medical college and moved from the control of Adventist Health Services, I'm sorry, from the control of the Adventist religious structure to the control of Adventist Health Services. That is what the conversation was about in April. What was pointed out at that time that there were developing interlocks between the two boards of trustees, that a commission was being organized, and that unless the city took a direct interest, the interests of the citizens in terms of having not only one institution but possibly two institutions moved from the city was in some danger. This was particularly so because there seemed to have been a valuation of the property of the college at about $75 million compared to the valuation of the hospital at about $25 million. And the thought was that if indeed this college did move under the control of the hospital, it in effect could be a funding source for the move itself and make that a much easier possibility for the college and to the loss of Tacoma Park, which I think values both institutions in our community. So that's what the letter basically was. I remember presenting to the council several times, and the last time was in May, where I suggested that you might want to write a letter to the hospital or to the college to discuss some of these issues and take some of these rumors and see whether they were indeed factual or not. And so what I even offered to do was to provide a template of a letter. Mark Elrich did, had received, actually before I spoke, such a template of a letter. And I'm asking whether such a letter was ever sent.
I don't believe so. As I think I let you know, I have discussed this issue with Randall Wisby, who's the president of Columbia Union College. And what he told me was that the college has had a commission looking for the past many months at sort of the college's, you know, finances and how they could be strengthened. And that one of the things that they have been looking at is to reorganize themselves under the Adventist Health Services, not Washington Adventist, but Adventist Health Services, which runs not only Washington Adventist but also Shady Grove. And that that wouldn't affect the college's operation except that it might make the college eligible for some health funding that they could then use for many of their health sciences programs. Now, they already have a very strong health sciences program. I had the honor of being one of their graduation speakers for their summer program some years back. And I would say IT and health sciences are their two big programs for their evening programs, which are getting to be a bigger and bigger part of their program now. There is a lot of demand for health sciences workers as well as information technology workers. So they are going in that direction. He has said to me that that has nothing to do with whether they move or not because they wouldn't be, it wouldn't be a formal relationship with Washington Adventist Hospital, it would be with Adventist Health Services. And so the move of Adventist Health, of Washington Adventist wouldn't have any impact on that. I would also say that, and he's also publicly and personally assured me on a number of times that Columbia Union College does not intend to move from Tacoma Park. The other thing that I would say is that even Washington Adventist Hospital's determination to move has been at least delayed. I think that if you asked them now, they would say they're still planning to move. But I think they're much more understanding of the barriers and the difficulties that such a move would make them go through. And so I would say that my own estimation is that it was not 100% certainty anymore that they were going to move.
Well, on April 26th, Dr. Wisby said, "I'm amazed at the amount of conjecture that has been created ever since Washington Adventist Hospital announces departure from Tacoma Park." I can say very clearly that the college has no plans to leave Tacoma Park. Now, I have no reason to assume that Dr. Wisby has anything but the best intentions in the college and this community at heart. On the other hand, you're talking about large institutions and the question of whether a city council acts as a protector of this community in a situation where we do have an intent for whatever they may say and whatever delays they may go through of moving from this community. And indeed, that hospital is in a position to act as cash cow for that move. So once you have the control of moving from one spot, Adventist, to Adventist Health Services, you know, there are some dangers. And so my concern is whether the council, other than having some casual conversations, has done anything formally. And if not, what's it going to do? What's it going to do? There's a vote coming up on October 17th in terms of whether that move will take place. And there is a pot being sweetened mightily.
Which move?
Whether the hospital will, or the Adventist Health Services will, the control of the college will move to Adventist Health Services, not physical movement. Okay. But there is a vote coming up. And if indeed that happens, you have an institution with an interest itself in leaving this community that will be controlling another institution of value within this community that whatever you may want to believe may be beyond the control of people that you're talking to or not. My suggestion is that this council look at its public obligation and look at having some kind of a public meeting before the 17th, that it widely advertise, and that it act as quickly as possible to get such a meeting together and to let people know that this issue is something that is a possibility and ought to be under public discussion. There is by no means agreement within even the college community about this transfer. There is by no means agreement in a lot of different areas of this community or that community about such a change in control. I would suggest that as the people who represent us here in Tacoma Park, you ought to be providing a forum for us. I would say to you that, look, you guys took $750,000 from that hospital to build a gym. Who more than you has an obligation to demonstrate that your lack of interest in this situation is not because of that?
It seems, I would be happy to have us send a letter or something to Columbia Union College telling them of our continued interest in their staying in the city. I don't really feel, I guess I'm not sure where the city comes in in terms of the college either being under Adventist Health Service or the Mid-Atlantic Conference of the Adventist Church. I'm not sure that our interest is different between one and the other. As long as the college stays here, that's our interest.
And I think that's your interest. And the question, as decisions are being developed, which could impact that by changes, by basically linking one site or one structure with another, one structure, the lead structure being one seeking to move out of this community. I mean, how better to create a college if you want to make the argument, a human services or, I'm sorry, a health services college than to have it physically adjoining a hospital, wherever that hospital might be.
But it already has a very large health sciences program and has had for a number of years.
And so you're saying that you know where the decisions would go as the control shifts?
Let me just say, I think you've raised some interesting points beyond what I heard you say the last time you were here. And I think it would be in our interest to talk a little more with you about some actions that we might take and some contacts we might make to explore some of the questions that you've raised. And I think we could do that.
Well, I appreciate that. What I would simply say is that in April, there was considerable time. You now have until October 17th to engage this community because that's when there's going to be a vote on this thing. So I mean, I've said my piece.
Right.
The question is, how do you then bring something together and advertise it so that this community has an opportunity to react to it? Or at least to find out what's going on and ask the questions. It's a big issue for the city.
Yes.
Largest employer in the city, and when you look at the college, I would wager second largest employer in the city. Both have been, most particularly the college, I almost said both, most particularly the college has been an excellent neighbor, certainly over the 20, 25 or 30 years that we've lived in this community.
Yes. No, there's no doubt that's the case.
And we would hate to see them go.
Right. I would agree with that.
And we would hate to see them go as an appendage of another institution that has not been such a great neighbor, although it's provided good healthcare.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you. And I would be happy to continue to talk to you about that.
I'm Tom Gagliardo. I'd like to follow up on what Reno was saying. I have a much better understanding, Mayor Porter, of where the hospital stands. They want to move. And now they say that there are more impediments that they originally perceived. But it's real clear to me, they want to move. What's not at all clear to me is where does the city council stand? To amplify on what Reno said, it is a large employer. The land use wants the hospital moves. The land use wants the college moves. If either or both of those things happen will have an enormous impact, an enormous impact on the community. Whether or not healthcare is available to all segments of the community if the hospital is no longer here, notwithstanding their discussion of providing some kind of urgent care facility somewhere nearby, has a huge impact on this community. It seems to me that the ball has been dropped since April when the letter was not sent. And that's something more, again, I'm simply echoing what Reno said, something more than an informal, off-the-record discussion and the assurances of a single individual who may or may not even be in office, and I mean you, I'm talking about the hospital and the college officials, who may not even be in office when the move takes place, is simply not enough. I think the community needs to be heard and I think the council needs to speak on this issue. Are you for the move? Are you against the move? What are the options? What's supposed to happen if this kind of very dramatic change takes place?
I think the council has very clearly put itself on record as being opposed to the move.
Then why didn't the letter go out? Why didn't something more than just an informal meeting with one representative of the hospital take place? There's not much opposition.
Well, I guess, I mean, we could spend a lot of time discussing this.
Effective strategies and tactics? I think we should.
Right. But there's, to me, those are different issues. What our relationship with the college and, you know, our opposition to the hospital's move. I think we've been very clear in our position to the hospital's move.
Follow the money. I think Reno has outlined for you tonight where there is a link. It can be denied over and over and over, but denials don't make it untrue. Follow the money. I've developed strategies and tactics around that premise. I don't see this city council in any way encouraging the hospital to stay or preventing it from moving. I don't.
All right. We should certainly have more discussion about that.
I see the acting chief. I have one other unrelated comment. In the city, I asked the administrative office to let the acting chief know that in the spirit of community policing, I would have appreciated a phone call, which I didn't get, chief. It's about parking tickets. Now, the parking ticket's legit, the fine is, and the fine is now paid. So no argument about that. I understand that in Tacoma Park, now that I have gotten a Tacoma Park parking ticket, it's a 14-day grace period in which to pay. Almost every other jurisdiction is 30 days or more. You got to consider what 14 days mean. For somebody who goes on vacation, and this was an August ticket, you're not there for the 14 days. For somebody who works and lives paycheck to paycheck... that will be controlling another institution of value within this community that whatever you may want to believe may be beyond the control of people that you're talking to or not. My suggestion is that this council look at its public obligation and look at having some kind of a public meeting before the 17th, that it widely advertise, and that it act as quickly as possible to get such a meeting together and to let people know that this issue is something that is a possibility and ought to be under public discussion. There is by no means agreement within even the college community about this transfer. There is no, by no means agreement in a lot of different areas of this, this community or that community about such a, such a change in control. I would suggest that as the people who represent us here in Tacoma Park, you ought to be providing a forum for us. I would say to you that, look, you guys took $350,000, $750,000 from that hospital to build a gym. Who more than you has an obligation to demonstrate that your lack of interest in this situation is not because of that?
It seems, I would be happy to have us send a letter or something to Columbia Union College telling them of our continued interest in their staying in the city. I don't really feel, I guess I'm not sure where the city comes in, in terms of the college either being under Adventist Health Service or the Mid-Atlantic Conference of the Adventist Church. I'm not sure that our interest is different between one and the other. As long as the college stays here, that's our interest.
And I think that's your interest. And the question, as decisions are being developed, which could impact that by changes, by basically linking one site or one structure with another, one structure, the lead structure being one seeking to move out of this community. I mean, how better to create a college if you want to make the argument, a human services or, I'm sorry, a health services college than to have it physically adjoining a hospital, wherever that hospital might be.
But it already has a very large health sciences program and has had for a number of years.
And so, you're saying that, that you know where the decisions would go as the, as the control shifts?
Let me just say, I think you've raised some interesting points beyond what I heard you say the last time you were here. And I think it would be in our interest to talk a little more with you about some actions that we might take and some contacts we might make to explore some of the questions that you've raised. And I think we could do that.
Well, I appreciate that. What I would simply say is that in April, there was considerable time. You now have until October 17th to engage this community because that's when there's gonna be a vote on this thing. So, I mean, I've said my piece.
Right.
The question is, the question is, how do you then, then bring something together and advertise it so that this community has an opportunity to react to it? Or at least to find out what's going on and ask the questions. It's a big issue for the city.
Yes.
Largest employer in the city. And when you look at the college, I would wager second largest employer in the city. It both have been, most particularly the college, I almost said both, most particularly the college has been an excellent neighbor, certainly over the 20, 25 or 30 years that we've lived in this community.
Yes. No, there's no doubt that's the case.
And we would hate to see them go.
Right.
And we would hate to see them go as an appendage of another institution that has not been such a great neighbor, although it's provided good healthcare.
Yes. Okay. Well, thank you. And I would be happy to continue to talk to you about that.
I'm Tom Gagliardo. I'd like to follow up on what Reno was saying. I have a much better understanding, Mayor Porter, of where the hospital stands. They want to move. And now they say that there are more impediments that they originally perceived, but it's real clear to me, they want to move. What's not at all clear to me is where does the city council stand? To amplify on what Reno said, it is a large employer. The land use wants the hospital moves. The land use wants the college moves. If either or both of those things happen, will have an enormous impact, an enormous impact on the community. Whether or not healthcare is available to all segments of the community if the hospital is no longer here, notwithstanding their discussion of providing some kind of urgent care facility somewhere nearby, has a huge impact on this community. It seems to me that the ball has been dropped since April, when the letter was not sent. And that's something more, again, I'm simply echoing what Reno said, something more than an informal, off-the-record discussion and the assurances of a single individual who may or may not even be in office, and I mean you, I'm talking about the hospital and the college officials, who may not even be in office when the move takes place, is simply not enough. I think this, I think the community needs to be heard and I think the council needs to speak on this issue. Are you for the move? Are you against the move? What are the options? What's supposed to happen if this kind of very dramatic change takes place?
I think the council has very clearly put itself on record as being opposed to the move.
Then why didn't the letter go out? Why didn't something more than just an informal meeting with one representative of the hospital take place? There's not much opposition.
Well, I guess, I mean, we could, we could spend a lot of time discussing this.
Effective strategies and tactics? I think we should.
Right. But there's, there, to me, there's, those are different issues, what our relationship with the college and, you know, our opposition to the hospital's move. I think we've been very clear in our position to the hospital's move.
Follow the money. I think Reno has outlined for you tonight where there is a link. It can be denied over and over and over, but denials don't make it untrue. Follow the money. I've developed strategies and tactics around that premise. I don't see this city council in any way encouraging the hospital to stay or preventing it from moving. I don't.
All right. We should certainly have more discussion about that.
I see the acting chief. I have one other unrelated comment. In the city, I asked the administrative office to let the acting chief know that in the spirit of community policing, I would have appreciated a phone call, which I didn't get, chief. It's about parking tickets. Now, the parking ticket's legit, the fine is, and the fine is now paid, so no argument about that. I understand that in Tacoma Park, now that I have gotten a Tacoma Park parking ticket, it's a 14-day grace period in which to pay. Almost every other jurisdiction is 30 days or more. You gotta consider what 14 days mean. For somebody who goes on vacation, and this was an August ticket, you're not there for the 14 days. For somebody who works and lives paycheck to paycheck, you can't pay within 14 days sometimes. I don't understand why the city has a 14-day period rather than a longer period. I also don't understand why the fine, that the penalty for not paying within time is much more severe than what Montgomery County imposes as one point of comparison. I understand these things can be debated. I understand the law, the line can be drawn in different places. But I really think that if we have community policing, it even means talking to citizens about how parking enforcement is done.
Okay. Thank you. I'm not even aware of how our, our rules on tickets stack up against the county. And perhaps we could start that discussion by having some information provided to the council about what our parking enforcement rules look like compared to Montgomery County's. That would be helpful to me, and maybe even the District of Columbia. Can't say as I've ever gotten a Montgomery County parking ticket, but I can't say the same about the district. Anyone else? All right. We will move on to the next item, which is the city manager's comments.
Just a few items this evening. We are still working on the agreement with Powermax, who is the mechanical subcontractor to James F. Knott, the contractor for Phase One of the Community Center project. The ball's kind of in their court at this point. We have asked for a response on some of the outstanding punch list items for Powermax to ensure that those items are resolved prior to any type of agreement being entered into between the parties. There has been minimal progress by James F. Knott on the other outstanding punch list items. There has been some railing work that has been basically ongoing for some time, finally did start the installation this week. As the council, I believe, is aware, there are still a number of items that James F. Knott has failed to address at this time. And given the amount of time that has passed without resolution, we are kind of exploring some other strategies to make sure those items can be resolved in a fairly timely fashion. The other item unrelated to the Community Center project per se, just an update on the installation of the remote card readers at Hefner, which I know has been of great interest to the council. The hardware installation was completed today. What remains is to actually do the programming to basically interface the remote card reader system at that location with the citywide security system. Hopefully, this will be resolved sometime in the next week to 10 days. But certainly, keep you updated as it moves along, but at this point, I don't anticipate any problem with meeting that schedule.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. Barb, regarding the card reader at Hefner Park, is that gonna work so that an organization such as the Tacoma Park Community Band that uses it on a regular basis is gonna be able to have a card that, that they use and the door will just automatically, the card will be able to open the door automatically for them during their regularly scheduled, scheduled time?
Probably need to talk to the IT staffs. There's really two ways it could work, Councilmember Seamus. One is to have a card that is only good for certain time periods, basically. It can be programmed to be able to open the door at a certain time and expire at a certain time. I wouldn't see it as being a blanket card that just opens the door at any time just because of other groups' plan to use it. The other thing the system is designed to do is it basically could allow the door to be opened remotely.
Yeah, I was thinking the card though would say that this is card number 846 and it can get in on Mondays between 7:00 and 10:00.
I believe the system does allow that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Any other questions? Did you have anything else, Barb?
No. Thank you.
Okay. We're now gonna move on to the first of our items on the agenda, and that's a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant application. Did you want to start us with a very brief presentation so people know what the, what they're being asked to comment on?
Yeah.
Hey there. Members of the council, my name is John Conger. I'm the chairman of the Citizens Advisory Committee on Community Development Block Grants.
And resident of Ward Four.
And resident of Ward Four. I've got some brief comments this evening. I know we're running a little bit late for the schedule and I shouldn't take more than 20 or 30 minutes. Kidding. Sarah told me not to make that joke.
But you went ahead anyway.
Yeah. Community Development Block Grants are, quite frankly, an excellent resource to the city. They're very flexible ways of helping residents and neighborhoods of low to moderate income. The city gets a certain amount of money from the county each year to administer these projects and to make decisions itself on these grants. This year, there's a reduction in the budget from last year. There have been some budget cuts at the federal level, which make their way on down through the county and to the city. We're looking at about $133,500 to distribute this year. Now, the rules of the program require that 85% or no more than 15% are service-oriented and the rest are construction-oriented grants. There was a large number of different modes of outreach soliciting grants. There were direct mailings, messages were sent out on the listserv, it was posted on the website, it was put out in the newsletter that the city was looking for applications. In the end, there were five applications for service grants and the city staff put together three proposals for construction grants. And I'd like to briefly go through those right now to get them on the record. Before I list specific projects, I, just the committee that was assembled, the Citizens' Advisory Committee, we sort of looked at it as follows, as far, as far as prioritization. One, we have totally in mind the fact that this is for low and moderate income neighborhoods and families. So, we are focused on things that will be of assistance to those groups. Second, we want to prioritize projects that focus on Tacoma Park residents. Some of these things are going to have wider scopes, involve Silver Spring residents. We want things that are focused on Tacoma Park, if we're gonna use Tacoma Park's allocation for this. And third, some of the projects that came forward, we would be, since we're dealing with a fairly small amount of money, we wouldn't be able to make a large impact with some of the projects, whereas with others, we would be making a very large impact. And so, because these dollars are flexible, we wanted to focus on those projects where these grants would make a significant impact and, and we'd be able to make a difference. So, briefly. The two projects that we are recommending for the service grants are the Ministries United, Silver Spring, Tacoma Park, Better Financial Choices, Better Chances Program. Essentially, what this is, is a grant program for folks who are in danger of being evicted from their homes that would help them get one more month of rent in order for them to sort out their financial situations. We've asked specifically that that be focused on Tacoma Park residents only. Secondly, the Man of Foods group has, they put in an application that would be focused on food for seniors and for low-income families. They would send sacks home with kids from school with food over, over the weekend. And their original proposal focused on the Rolling Terrace Elementary School. We asked them to expand it to the Piney Branch Elementary School as well. And we asked them to resubmit their application for a larger amount of money because we thought this was a high enough priority project, focused the way that we wanted it focused. And they did that and were recommending $9,300 for that particular project. There were, there was another small project called Top Banana that is a food delivery project as well, although they were looking for money focused on marketing. They hadn't really gotten off the ground in Tacoma Park yet. And we thought that once they do establish themselves more, that they might be a better applicant, but not at this point in time. The other two projects that we had were ones where we were only gonna be able to make a very small impact at a large budget. And so, we deferred those as well. The, if I remember right, it was Sea Safe and...
Affordable Housing.
The Affordable Housing Revolving Loan Fund. Those two projects, we thought would be good prospects for the city budget as a whole if y'all wanted to consider the larger sum. But for these dollars, it just didn't seem like the best use of our money to chip away at the larger need. Lastly, let me hit briefly the, the construction projects. First is the Single Family Property Improvement Grants. This is part of the, is actually part of the Affordable Housing Action Plan passed by the council. It would be $50,000 there to address code deficiencies for the exterior of homes. Second, there's some commercial facade improvements along the New Hampshire Corridor. And finally, last year, we were able to set aside some funds for planning along Maple Ave, for improvements along Maple Avenue. And we have the actual follow-up funds here for, for executing the plan. That's all I have. But before I completely close, I just want to say thank you to the members of the committee that, that worked with us and to Sarah and the city staff for all the support. They are remarkable folks and couldn't have done it without them.
Great. Thank you. Do we have a sign up for the public hearing? Did anybody sign up? Doesn't, I don't see a sheet over there.
Yeah, I have a question. Did we have a copy of the, I didn't find in my packet, the...
Item eight? These amounts?
The specific projects referenced are noted in...
Okay, now, under item eight.
Does anybody wish to speak in the public hearing on this? I don't see anybody going once, going twice. Okay.
It's great to be non-coprofessional.
So, I guess the public hearing is open, the public hearing is closed. And there's, there's additional chance for comments on this, if anybody is so inclined or...
Yes.
The submittable deadline, when it comes back to us and we have to get stuff?
The city council will be asked, well, you'll be chatting about it later this evening, but then you'll be asked to consider a resolution next week.
Okay.
And if individuals have, or comments or concerns that they'd like to submit, they should do that by the end of this week to the city clerk and we'll be sure to forward them on to you.
Okay. Thank you both.
Thank you.
So, I guess we're gonna do interviews and the first one is Jonathan, my glasses on. Jonathan Rodney for Committee on the Environment. If you want to come up and have a seat at the table? Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your interest in the committee and...
Okay. Well, my name is Jonathan Rodney. Just recently moved to the area about six months ago and live at 7411 Piney Branch Road. And started getting the newsletters in the mail, Tacoma Park Newsletter, and I've been reading them every month and saw an available position for the Committee on the Environment. So, instantly became interested in that. Always sort of had an interest in learning about the environment and had a passion for protecting the environment. So, it looked like an interesting chance to follow up. So, went to a meeting last month and learned a little bit about what goes on, how the meetings run. And I think it's something I'd be interested in committing to and helping the people of Tacoma Park understand the importance of protecting the environment and learning ways to make that happen. So, maybe is that, should I give you a little bit more?
And I see from your letter that looks like you went to the committee meeting on primary election day.
Yes, it is. That's correct. Yeah, I enjoyed getting in and meet the people at the committee and got along with them well. And they seem, they seem to have a passion for the environment, just like I do. And, and so, it seems like a good group to be involved in.
Okay. Everybody have any questions? Teri?
I was curious, how long you live here in Tacoma Park?
I moved here in March of this year. So, still being acclimated to the area, but I like it, like it very much so far.
Very good. And you said you didn't have any part of the committee experience like this. Were you involved in any way in your previous community?
No, I haven't been involved in any experience on committee per se such as this. The only direct tie I have to it is through my professional career. And I'm, I'm an atmospheric scientist, so I'm sort of tied to studying the environment. And other than that, it's just my common knowledge that I pick up from reading. So, but I'm, you know, I'd be a motivated individual and a hard worker and very eager to learn what I need to learn.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Jesse, do we have any other people applying for any vacancies on the committee?
There are no applicants.
Okay. And the, and the committee consists of anywhere from seven to 11, and we currently have seven. That's what it looks like.
What does the sheet say?
Sheet, sheet shows seven names. So, I guess we could take this up.
So, invite your friends.
We could, we could...
I should say, there are two members whose term has expired on June 30th.
Ah, yes.
We need to stick by the staff, I have to say. But we can go to do it now and have, are contacting the members to see if they wish to apply.
Okay. So technically, we only have five at this point.
That's right.
Okay.
Does that mean the committee doesn't exist anymore?
No.
Minimum is seven?
No. I don't think so. It exists.
What does it mean, what does minimum mean?
I'll just mention that your, your list here is inaccurate. Jack Whipsholz resigned maybe four to six months ago, family issues, maybe even longer than that, probably about six months ago, I think. So, I know, I'm pretty sure I informed you of that. So, yeah, we do, and, and both Tim and Kia are planning on re-upping, so they'll be coming in for their interviews when we can get them scheduled.
Okay. Good. My point being, we can schedule a resolution on this.
Yes.
Okay. Good. So, we'll get your name soon. Thank you. The next interview is Michael Richards, re-upping on the Ethics Commission. Welcome. So, you want to tell us a little bit about your interest in being reappointed and any issues that are ongoing on the commission?
Be delighted. As you know, we've been working on some redrafting, some tweaking, I guess would be the slang term of the ethics ordinance to submit to council for its consideration. We've made quite a bit of headway. I know the ones, the sections that I'm working on, we've gone through a couple of readings in the committee and we've since, and I'm now adding some edits and so forth. And I think there are a number of sections that are, where we're making that kind of progress. Fortunately, it's a long process since we're dealing with people's lives and careers and so forth, so we're doing it very deliberately and carefully.
Good. Anybody have any questions? Teri?
Yeah, I'm curious, and this is probably more about the committee than you yourself, but I'm just curious if the committee has talked about expanding the scope of the ethics ordinance within Tacoma Park?
We have been actually trying to look at what we have and to make it function. I don't know that anybody has particularly proposed something that would encompass an expansion beyond its role of dealing with ethics involving elected officials, appointed officials and city staff. If there were more, it would be... If there were more, we'd be delighted to have some input and some ideas.
As I recall, the focus of the ethics resolution is on contributions and expenditures. But I think in-- my recollection from, you know, the corporate world is that the ethics rules are frequently much broader than that, and much broader than what we have in our current ethics laws.
I do believe the law has a large focus also on conflicts of interest in general, and the idea of public integrity, keeping a sense that government is not just something that's being used for private purposes, but for some kind of public good. And I think that's been the general way we've been looking at it. I guess in the private sector, because there's more coercion available when you're somebody's employee, they can often-- they often can try to control a lot more of your personal life. And we, of course, have been very sensitive not to cross those boundaries without necessarily having a mandate from the council.
Yeah, I just have encouraged in the past, and encourage again, that you look at some of the ethics rules that are-- that larger corporations use, and see if any of those are appropriate for us.
I think it's an excellent source, excellent original source. You should know that we have actually, one of the members is Chief Ethics Officer at one of the federal departments, and is really well-versed in the sort of very professionalized way that the federal government, which has resources to do it, does it.
Sure.
And he's been a terrific-- given us terrific insights into how to take some of those ideas and put it into the smaller-scale, more volunteer-based efforts that we do.
Right, very good, thank you.
Pleasure.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, councilmembers.
Senator, if you'll--
And again, Councilman Seaman, we'd love to get any ideas, if you could, if you have any particular corporate documents that you think would be great for our consideration and deliberation, we would be delighted.
Sure, I'd be interested to get an invitation to your meeting one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next interview is for the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee. I don't see Gail Fisher-Stewart. Is Fred Schultz here? If you'd like to come down and have a seat? Welcome.
Thank you.
And if you'd like to tell us a little bit about your interest in the Public Safety
I've lived in Tacoma Park, and our house is 7311. I've been driving for a little over 20 years, my wife and I. And I've spent part of my career in public service, a good bit of it, a good bit of it in the private sector. And it occurred to me that it was about time that I tried to contribute something back to the city by volunteering. And I became aware of the fact that Ward Six didn't have a representative on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee, and it had been a while, and that somebody was needed, at least one. So, not knowing a thing about public safety, I quickly raised my hand and suggested to my councilmember Doug Barry that I would like to do this, or at least try it. I started attending meetings to sort of understand what the committee did last fall. Basically, to find out two things, whether this was a committee that I thought was worth participating in, and second of all, whether it was a committee where I thought I could actually contribute something. Because if I joined a committee, I want to make a commitment to it, I'm going to attend the meetings, I just don't want to get serious about it. Because there's a learning curve for me before I think I can make a contribution. It's my impression, the people I've observed on the committee are talented, and very serious about their work, and that there's a lot of work that needs to be done too. So after thinking about that for a while, I decided, yep, that I would like to be formally appointed to this committee by the city council, if possible. I'd be delighted to talk to you more about my background and stuff like that.
I apologize, Mr. Schultz, that I didn't hear the first part of your presentation, but I have read the materials that you sent us.
Okay.
And it does seem like you do have a good background for the kinds of things that you would look for.
I think I do. I mean, I've done a lot of community work in other communities. I started out with a master's degree in city planning. I've worked for the city of Baltimore for a number of years, and for Arlington County for a number of years.
Yes, I can see that. I think Terry had a question.
First, I'd just like to thank you for volunteering, but I especially like the idea that you've taken the opportunity to go to several of the meetings first, to see how you feel about the committee and how they feel about you, and what do you think it would be productive for you to be on the committee?
Well, if I were an expert in public safety, you know, that wouldn't have been much of a question to run along, but I'm not. I've been witness to the workings of the Tacoma Park Police Department, as it's done its work in my neighborhood from time to time. And I think it's a critical issue for the community, that we have the best police force that we possibly can have. I think when you talk about public safety, that that's the first order of business, the first line of defense. I think we're all concerned about terrorism and the big stuff in our lives, but when it gets down to it, we worry about whether our door's locked at night from day to day, whether our car is safe, and our children are safe. And I think that's where the attention has to be paid mostly, is trying to help the police department do the best job it can do, be an advocate if possible.
I think you're probably an expert community member, and that's what we need on the committee.
Thank you.
I also think that the fact you mentioned in your materials, which is exactly true, we don't have anybody representing Ward Six on the committee at this point, and I think that would be a very important thing to have. We wanted to try and get as much representation from the various areas of the city as we could, and I think that's helpful.
I'd like to try and help my city councilmember Doug Barry make his job a little easier.
You would do both, and I value Fritz's advice, and I seek it often, and he's well-known and well-respected in the neighborhood, and I'm sure he'd make a great contribution tonight.
And I just wanted to add that I also perked up a bit when I saw in your letter that you've got experience in community development, economic development, and working with public-private partnerships, and the Chamber of Commerce and the business community. All of those things are valuable expertise that it's nice to know about, and maybe as you get into a little bit on the Public Safety Committee, we can also, you know, pick your brain on some other things, too.
Oh, I would be flattered if somebody actually wanted to pick my brain. You might not find much there, but there might be some morsels that are useful. No, seriously, you know, this is like my first time I've tried to do anything for the community in a formal sense, and if other possibilities present themselves and seem interesting, sure, I'd be delighted.
Great.
You don't know the door you vote for.
Yes, actually, I do.
Well, we appreciate it. Thank you very much, and appreciate your coming. We have Shay Yilfelder for the Safe Roadways Committee. Do you want to tell us a little bit about why you're interested in serving on Safe Roadways?
Yeah, sure. I guess a few reasons, a few levels. I mean, from a personal perspective, just as someone who, you know, not just drives the streets, but rides bicycle routinely basically daily through certainly my neighborhood and the rest of the town. And also as a parent of a couple of small kids who walk up and down the street to the park. You know, those are personal concerns of mine. I also noticed that the committee doesn't have representation from Ward Five at present, which is where I live, and certainly think that's an important concern as well. And then, I guess at a more general level, I'm interested in encouraging the committee, and through that indirectly the council, to be mindful of how some of the small decisions that are made on things like issues about, you know, how a particular road's going to be arranged, or where the bike lanes are going to go, how the parking fits, and what the sort of cumulative impact of those kinds of decisions might be in the long run, given how important transportation issues are to the quality of life. You know, I think everybody in the Washington area, basically, is certainly Tacoma Park too. And so I think that's sort of the perspective I'd like to bring to the committee.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions?
I was going to note that I do, and Mark was nodding energetically here, about having somebody from Ward Five on the committee. We don't at this point, and I know with Flower Avenue and a number of other very busy streets in Ward Five, that it's certainly an issue.
And most of the junior areas.
Yes.
Yeah.
With good news, possibly coming on Stigwick Parkway. Make it safer.
Crosswalks?
Crosswalks, maybe stop soon.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I know Shay through our children's school, and can speak for his solid character and interest in Tacoma Park, and think he'd be a great member.
Oh, good, very good. Are there any other questions from other members of the council?
I definitely appreciate your interest, and I think it would be very valuable to have you on the committee. I think it's good to have somebody from Ward Five, and certainly someone who has that level of interest, as I think Councilmember Seaman's made the point. It doesn't really require any technical expertise, although we're very glad to get it if people have it, but it really takes the commitment and the interest, and always very happy to see people with that commitment and interest. So thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, we're now moving to our special session items, and the first is a resolution commenting on proposed changes to the transit facilities at Tacoma Metro. And I've asked Suzanne Ludlow to make a very short presentation, just so the folks who may not have been watching this issue sort of know what the issue is and what the proposed resolution would cover.
Good evening. Next Wednesday, October 11th, from 6:00 to 10:00 p.m., the WAMADA Board will be holding a compact hearing at the Trinity Episcopal Church on Pine Branch Road, just in Washington, D.C., to hear public testimony on the proposed changes to the transit facilities at the Tacoma Metro Station, resulting from the proposed sale and development of most of the Tacoma Metro property. The Tacoma Park City Council has previously taken strong positions to protect transit access at the station for the Tacoma Park and Tacoma communities, and we do have a resolution, a draft resolution to be considered tonight. Last week, Monday, on the 25th, I went over a number of the difficulties that patrons would face if the proposed sale and development through as proposed. Those included more limited parking in general. The base recommendation is to cut the parking space, number of parking spaces at the metro in half. The second proposal is to build a two-story parking garage, which would still not bring it up to the total number of spaces that are currently on the site. It would build bus bays, there's currently nine bus bays, it would expand that to 10, but the studies that we have seen have indicated that 12 bus bays are needed, certainly some flexibility greater than 10 bus bays are needed for future growth, and there's no space available on the site as proposed to allow for future expansion. There's also difficulty in accessing the main entrance, because the entrance to the bus bays would be moved closer to the current main entrance at Carroll Street, making the patio area outside of the entrance smaller, and making it more difficult to drop patrons off close to that entrance without actually blocking the exits for the bus. The even more difficult would be access to the elevator entrance, especially for handicap residents. In that situation, the elevator access is closest to a shared bus and car, private car vehicle turnaround, a relatively small diameter, such that if somebody drops someone off close to the elevator entrance, it would block buses from going through and doing their turnaround, and that could lead to a great deal of congestion. If you don't do that, it's a long walk to the elevator entrance for most patrons. The proposal cuts the number of bus of bike storage lockers from 60 to 40. No bike racks are shown on the plan. There may be some bike racks proposed, and we've been trying to receive additional information. Nevertheless, whether or not those would be included is not indicated, and no location is indicated. In some, the area that would be sold off is a large portion of the site, and the amount that would be retained for transit service is a small strip of land along the tracks and a portion of the current parking lot for parking. And that limited space and that awkward configuration makes it difficult to provide adequate transit service currently, in near future, and certainly in the long term. The cost of the project is such, the contract for this project is such that Metro would be required to pay for the replacement transit facilities. This is an unusual arrangement, and means that it is likely that Metro would not get a large profit from selling the land. I've provided tonight a draft resolution, I presented one on the 25th. There have been several changes based on comments that were made at the meeting, the work session on the 25th, and several comments that I received shortly thereafter, and those have been incorporated in the draft that's before you. It basically makes the point that Tacoma Park, Maryland does a transit oriented community, and uses the Tacoma Metro heavily, and depends on it, that the selling off of this land will cause significant hardship in terms of access to the transit facilities. And it talks, it details how that access would be curtailed. And it also addresses the issue that it is a responsibility of Metro and of the Federal Transit Administration to ensure adequate access at these facilities as part of their various financial transactions and day-to-day control of the properties, and that this does not do that. The resolution strongly urges WAMADA to not approve the sale of this property in this configuration, in this way, such that transit access is limited. In addition to the draft resolution, I've copied to you several other comments that I received from residents. One is from Randall Marks. His major point was that he's a strong believer in struck in smart growth, and would approve of residential development at Metro in general, but he is concerned about the configuration in his case, and that he's particularly concerned that this isn't a money winner for WAMADA. There are some points made by Francis Phipps about making sure that the various, this resolution is tied back to the FTA approval. And there are a couple of comments from Faith Wheeler in Tacoma, D.C. She brings up a point which I want to just mention, because she does call it to everyone's attention, that the Tacoma Transit Transportation Study calls for 10 bays and two layover spots, and that is what is provided on this plan. However, when you look at the study, it indicates that those two layover spots should be in regular bus bays, so that there's flexibility, you have the flexibility to use it for patrons in the future. The arrangement that is on the table has the layover spots at the median not accessible to patrons. And she also indicates that we should mention that there will be increased demand for transit services in the future. I thought that was included, but I may have missed that. And if somebody saw a place that that's appropriate, that's fine. But I just wanted to bring those points to you. But I just wanted to bring those points to your attention. I've received a couple of comments from people who've seen the newsletter article about this, who've indicated that they're just now paying attention to this subject. One woman called me and said it was mind-boggling, and she was going to make sure that her friends also put their concerns on the record about this. So, there is interest in this as people have a chance to look at the details. Happy to answer any questions? Oh, and the other thing I've included is the study that we commissioned as a city with Nelson Nygaard Consulting Associates of New York City as to, were we on track with our interpretation of the transit impacts of this proposal, and we are. And this is from a firm that also supports smart growth development at Metro stations. Nevertheless, the importance, it doesn't, if the transit access doesn't work, then it kills the whole idea. And so the details of that, we went through the various transit studies, the traffic impact analysis by the developer commissioned by EYA, left out Route 16 buses, transportation, and some others did not appreciate the fact that the parking lot is not all they can do parking, and so made some things that made the demand for the site look less than it is. And they went through and double-checked all of those figures, and also showed the difficulties of traffic congestion around the area and how more investigation of that subject should be done. If there's any questions, I can answer them.
The council have any questions before we move to the discussion of the resolution? Okay. Does someone want, we have to, if we're going to have a discussion of the resolution, we should probably move the resolution. Okay, it's been moved and seconded multiple times. Bruce, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say that, for me, what this all boils down to is that I think we're for transit-oriented development, we're for smart growth, and this project is neither. It's not smart, and it's not transit-oriented development when you limit access to a transit facility and you foreclose future options to have access to that transit facility by the action of the development. And therefore, because of that, it doesn't fit the criteria that we want, and all of the reasons are laid out in there. And I think as long as people get that main point, the people who, some of the people who maybe are just beginning to pay attention and see what's going on, if they understand that point, then they know why we're making the arguments that we are and why we think this should not go forward.
It's not transit-oriented development, it's development-oriented development, and for that reason, it should be opposed.
Any questions, Terry?
Thank you. No question, but I'd just comment that I appreciate the vast amount of work you put in to pull in all of our ideas and opinions together in this resolution. I know it was a challenge sometime to work for seven bosses.
I have to say, with good ideas, and we've had many good ideas from the community, I really appreciate all the assistance.
Yeah, and, you know, someone may say that WAMADA had a good idea when they started and they developed a plan that showed that it really wasn't going to work, and so they've gone back and, and I think really put in a lot of work to try to pull together a plan that would address community issues. And I think what they've been able to demonstrate is that you just can't do it. You can't address the transit needs and the future needs, anticipated needs of transit, by taking the land away and putting the housing on it. It's also troubling to see that the housing that they're putting on is car-oriented, upper, or maybe not upper, but at least middle-income housing, people who are least likely to be using the transportation. Anyways, I certainly support the resolution. I also say that the members of Ward Four, the residents of Ward Four, are very concerned because they are very dependent on the public transportation, and we have a petition that we're circulating within Ward Four, calling for WAMADA to really, you know, look at this in a common-sense way and recognize the fact that it is not transit-oriented and it doesn't meet the current needs nor the anticipated future needs of transportation. And although we're circulating that in Ward Four, I have copies for anyone who would like to take a copy and get additional signatures on it. It's, there's nothing in there that says Ward Four, so I have copies that I can give to anybody that wants. I can email them to you later. If you want to call me at 301-565-0190, and, you know, make additional copies of this and get more signatures. We hope to have, how many residents do we have in Tacoma Park? We hope to have several petitions, you know, that we can handle, we can hand to the WAMADA Board when we go there on the 11th of October.
A couple of things. I really appreciate the community assistance. They, you all have been incredibly instrumental in keeping this issue in front of the public and the council, and we really couldn't have done it without you. I appreciate the staff time that's going into this. I look forward to the financial analysis of this property. I think that's critical as we prepare for the compact hearing. What I would like to do, I support this resolution as it stands, but one of the aspects of public comment that I have not had time to incorporate into it is some of the detail to the resolved clauses that I think will bolster our case in front of the FTA. And I would like the council to approve this resolution tonight with the caveat that there may be an amendment next week that we could consider and approve, and I would get the language to you between now and then so that you can review it. The case is very strong in the whereas clauses, and I want to make sure, as someone aptly pointed out, that the resolved clauses also make the case strongly in a way that the FTA really can't hide from the error that they would make in approving this proposal. It constrains transit use, it does not enhance transit use. No matter how many flowery words or flowery pictures are shown, it does not plan for future and current access to the station, and that is required. If WAMADA doesn't pay attention to it, we need FTA to pay attention to it. And then the second thing, which we don't have hard numbers on yet, but we will soon, is the financial aspects. FTA also has to pay attention to that. We need to be very specific about what this fails to do, what we support in development of the site, and what we do not support. So, if the council can permit me to do that over the next week, I'd appreciate it.
I think we could put it on the agenda. My understanding would be that the amendments that you would propose would not be substantive, they would simply elaborate what's already there. So that the people who are here this evening commenting on the resolution need not be concerned that the resolution was going to be changed so that they would end up having to show up again and that their comments this evening would need to be gone over again. I would be very much in support of that as long as we were in the same vein and it didn't, if you're talking about strengthening the resolution, I think that's a, that's a good idea, but I don't want to leave anyone with any concerns that council's planning to do something that would substantially alter what's there now, and that doesn't sound like your intention.
I do have a question on there. The staff had planned to prepare a press release announcing the passage of the resolution for its go-on the next couple of days. I would still like to be able to do that.
Yes, I think that's essential, certainly informing the public of this is, there's no time to waste. And, you know, putting our position out there. All that I would like to do is, under each of these resolved clauses, I would be proposing some bullet points that would very specifically implicate this proposal and the FTA's required criteria. So, that's what I see enhancing this, is a few bullet points under each of the resolved clauses.
Okay. One of the, just to, I agree with the points that have been made by my colleagues and just add a couple more quickly. One is I have gotten a question from people on the order of, you know, why is, why was this proposed in the first place? You know, if this is such a bad idea, how did it ever get going? And I think the answer is that the process that was used was basically one of advertising the availability of the property, and WAMADA only got one response, and that was from the current developer who proposed something like what's on the proposal now. And I think what should have happened, and what I understand is happening more now in their current station design, is that the, is that WAMADA first goes in and decides how much land is necessary for transit activities, that set aside, and if there is both current and future transit activities, and then if there's any property left over, then they talk about what would, how best to develop that to enhance the transit access. In this case, I think it was done exactly backwards, and that's led to a lot of the problems that we have now. Even though I think in some instances, WAMADA has sort of implicitly acknowledged that and the fact that they've made some changes in how future stations are developed, nonetheless, they have not gone back and essentially fixed this station. I feel in some ways like we're the, we're the bad example that's the cautionary tale to everyone else, but we remain that way and we haven't been put right. The other thing, and I want to thank the staff and to thank the city attorney for the work they're doing on the financial issues, I think the importance of the fact that WAMADA loses money with, with each dollar that's spent on putting back the transit facilities is very important because it means that down the road, even if everybody should agree, oh, yes, definitely, we need a lot of improvement in the transit facilities, it's unlikely they will have the financial means to do that. That's the other thing that's wrong with this proposal, is that even if later, everybody goes, well, yes, we really made a mess of that one, and now we need to fix it, there won't be the financing, there won't be, I mean, I suppose one could conceivably get to the point where WAMADA would be paying the developer rather than the other way around for the property, but in any case, there's not going to be financial resources to fund the improvements, hard to call them improvements, to fund the transit facilities back to the level that they should be. And so both of those things are very, very concerning, and I think both of them, as Joy mentioned, stand in violation of the Federal Transit Administration's requirement that these type of transit-related, I'll call them, facilities not undermine existing access to transit, which is definitely what's happening here. Any additional council comment? Is there any public comment on this resolution? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to tag on to your comments about this station being different than other stations, because when WAMADA was presenting at the Forestline Metro discussion, a very large community discussion, they actually got up there and said that Tacoma Park was done wrong, and that they were learning from it.
Can we get a tape of that?
And the part that bothered me most about that was the notion that, since they had a chance to walk away from this and do it right, and they know they're not doing other stations like this because this was not the right process they did in Tacoma Park, it's kind of like, why didn't you, since you had the option to start over, why didn't you start over and do this right? Because I actually warned people in the Forestline audience not to take too seriously what was being said, given our experiences in Tacoma Park, and their, WAMADA's response was, oh, yeah, it was a mistake, but we're doing it differently now. And I just thought that they ought to be doing our thing differently if they think it was a mistake.
I agree. Are there any public comments on this resolution? Sorry, that wasn't you.
Yes, that is, but I'm, I'm. My name's Sabrina Baron, I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. As you well know, my organization has been interested in this issue from the moment we learned about it. I just want to reiterate my thanks to the council and to the staff for their hard work and strong stance on this. And as a historian, I think it's, I think it's altogether fitting and proper, is that the phrase? That there's been concentration in, in the staff's work on the history of Tacoma Park as a transit-oriented community. We are an original transit-oriented community. We are a railroad commuter, streetcar commuter community. It was at the, at the heart of the foundation of this community. Sam Abbott gets a huge amount of credit for actually being responsible for the shift of funding that allowed WAMADA to be established to begin with. WAMADA has roots in this community that it would be very nice to see them acknowledge. But I appreciate your strong stance on this, I hope you will hold to that stance. I'd also encourage you to disseminate the staff's report and the consultant's report as deeply and widely as possible. Mr. Glenn at the FTA definitely needs to see it. I'd like to see Gladys Mack, the chair of the WAMADA Board, get a copy of it. I'd like to see it go to all of our federal, state, and county elected representatives. It would be great for them to have this information, to see how poorly executed this proposal is, and to see that there are major, major remedies required to preserve the transit access and the transit potential that this community needs. So, please, please disseminate it deeply and widely. Thank you.
That's a good idea. In addition to using it at the hearing, we can do that.
I'm Eileen Sobek, 7637 Carroll Avenue, and I really just wanted to thank and commend the council for taking a strong stance on this because I think it's really going to enhance the community's credibility before WAMADA and the FTA, and I think it's absolutely critical. I think the resolution really captures the sentiments of the residents of Tacoma Park. I took part in the full-day workshop last spring with a huge, full roomful of Tacoma Park and D.C. residents who had very serious concerns about this project, and I think it really, I think it will be great next week to have individual residents testifying about the shortcomings of the proposal, but I think having our elected officials both physically present and testifying and having a resolution that expresses the sentiment of our community, and I think it does capture the consensus of what I've seen and heard, will be extremely important, and I really, really am thankful to the council and to staff for putting this together and disseminating it. I am co-president of my local neighborhood association, Long Branch Sligo Neighborhood Association. I'm letting the neighborhood association know that there is a resolution and that there is a meeting, and urging people, whatever their views are, to come out and testify and to let WAMADA know that they support the council's resolution if they do. So, I really thank the council and the staff and all the associations and community groups for working together to bring this to the attention of WAMADA and not let something that really doesn't reflect the heartfelt wishes of our community and what we want to see in terms of development and transit in the future happen here. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hi, I'm Catherine Tootes, and I don't want to prolong this, but I really am impressed with the resolution as it was put together. There's a lot of work in that, and I appreciate all the work and the sentiment that went into that. I also attended that workshop on March 4th, and I was amazed at how many of my neighbors and friends showed up at that workshop and how strongly everyone was opposed to this development. Everyone supports smart growth, they support development around a transit station, but this isn't smart growth, as our wise council member said. And, I mean, there are environmental problems with this development as well. I realize that there's, this is to focus on the transit issues, but as has been said before, this is not going to enhance transit, it's going to harm it. And I appreciate the work that's been put into this, and I'm glad it's going forward.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak on the resolution? Anyone else like to speak on the resolution? All right, seeing none. The resolution is in front of the council. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. I know you'll continue to be working on this through next Wednesday. The next item on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance authorizing a contract with, actually, I think it's Dr. Kenneth Barr regarding stabilization or codification. And we've discussed this already, I think actually we discussed it more than once. Would someone like to move the--
Sir, move.
I'm sorry, move the ordinance.
Move.
Someone like to second it?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any counsel comments? We actually had the opportunity to interview Dr. Barr. He came and met with the council, was it last week? The week before, last week? My how time flies. Last week, and we had an opportunity to spend nearly an hour talking to him about various issues, and which was very helpful. Are there any counsel comments on this second reading of the ordinance? Are there any public comments on this second reading? All right, nope, we need to hear them, we gotta have a--
Okay.
Okay, good. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Porter.
Aye.
Councilmember Austin Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember Barry.
Councilmember Clay.
Councilmember Elrich.
Aye.
Councilmember Seelins.
Aye.
Ordinance passes at second reading. The council's now going to take a short recess, and we will be back in a few minutes.
Would anybody like to copy--
Did that parking issue from last week get assigned to anywhere? Which part?
Remember the-- Back to take up our two work session items. We have, first, the discussion of proposed community development block grant awards, or projects, as it's listed on the blue sheet.
Mr. Conger went through the applications that were received, and provided you with some detail regarding the projects that are being recommended by the advisory committee. Basically, we have two service projects. Again, we're limited to 15% of our CBVG allocation, and we're estimating that that will be about $20,000. And the two that were selected from the five that were submitted are the MUST, Ministries United, Silver Springs Tacoma Park, which provides emergency assistance to individuals that are at risk of losing their housing, either due to a utility shut-off, or an eviction notice, or foreclosure. And as noted in the attached matrix, they're estimating that they will be able to assist 15 households, and those will all be in Tacoma Park. The second project is Man of Foods. This will be the second year that they've received funding if they follow through or support the committee's recommendations. Again, as Mr. Conger noted, we had recontacted them and asked them to increase their request so that we would be able to do additional schools. They'll be providing food distribution services at the Franklin Apartments, as well as something they call Smart Sacks, which is kind of, it's kind of a cool project, where they identify children in need at the two elementary schools, and then send home with them a backpack full of food that's child-appropriate for them over the weekend, because they're finding that many children get breakfast and lunch at the school, but then are hungry for the rest of the weekend. And by using the backpack, it's sort of a discreet kind of thing, they have an extra backpack on Friday, they bring it back on Monday, and it gets refilled. So, it would be $10,000 for MUST, and $9,300 for Man of Foods. And then the capital projects, frankly, we did not receive anything from the community, and these are all staff-initiated. The first, for single-family property improvement grants, is tied to the vacant and abandoned properties project that we're working on. It's structured so that as we go through and continue our inventory, that there would be resources available to support homeowners that are in place but just not quite able to pull off painting their house, or making repairs in the site repairs that are needed for them to become in compliance with the Property Maintenance Code. We're also asking for $25,000 to supplement commercial facade and site improvement grants. We're hoping to receive funding from the state through their community legacy program. If we're unsuccessful with that, we'll continue to identify other funding sources. And those will be small grants, $5,000 to $10,000 for a variety of things, from signage replacement, paving, just clean-up landscaping, that type of thing. And then the third item is Maple Avenue Streetscapes, and this is a follow-up, as John indicated, to the first phase, which was focused on planning. We don't have any specific projects identified, because the planning component isn't over yet. The sense is that if we receive additional funding, then we're anticipating that that money would go towards Maple Avenue's Phase II improvements.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. First, I would just like to thank you, Sarah, for all the work that you put into this. I know it's not just the community committee that has helped with this, but you've also done a lot of work.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. And I-- And I certainly appreciate the work that the community did. I know each year, this is a challenge to try to sort through all these things and not just make sense of the applications, but also to try to balance the various desires and needs of the community. And I think it looks ideal. The one project which was recommended not to fund the Top Banana Home Delivery Groceries is a, I think, an important new service that's being provided in Tacoma Park. They're just starting to provide their service in Tacoma Park. As they were planning for this money to be used primarily for outreach services, I would concur with the recommendation of the committee, but I'll also go on and offer to, and I would call Top Banana, and offer to help them with their outreach in the community. Basically, what they do is they take orders for groceries from people who have trouble leaving home, such as the elderly or the infirm, and then they go buy the groceries for them and bring it to them for the price of the groceries plus a small delivery fee or service fee. And so I think it's a valuable resource and I can see in the future where it might be something we want to supplement, but right now, they're just trying to get things going. And so I would certainly like to help them with their outreach program so that the community members know that this is available.
As a follow-up to that, one of the things I did when I spoke with them to clarify their application was to refer them over to the Tacoma Foundation. It seemed to be inappropriate fit for some of the funding that they've got there, given the small size of their request. The other nice thing about that, too, is it's sort of a social service fair on wheels in that when they deliver groceries, they also provide information on social services that are available and that might be appropriate for that particular individual. So there's an educational component of it as well.
There's also a social component because it's a live body coming to visit someone who doesn't get the chance to get out necessarily.
Of course, the way I spoke about, they do a lot of that.
Yeah, everybody's not a shut-in, but it is an aspect of their service.
I apologize for missing the first part of this discussion when I was out of the room, but was there any consideration given to setting aside some of the capital funding for in case the council decides to move forward with the gym?
You could use block grant money for the gym, but because of the Davis bacon requirement...
Right, but I thought we were switching it off with the road improvement.
That was not part of the discussion issue.
Okay. If we were to decide to go ahead with the gym and decided to look for other sources of funding, would this be available? Could we reprogram it?
You could reprogram. Actually, that was one of the recommendations of the committee, too, is because there's such a long lag time between when the awards are made and when the money actually becomes available, they felt it was appropriate, and I concur with them, that the council look at the capital projects prior to executing any contracts because there may have been other funding sources identified or other more urgent needs that had come up that would be equally appropriate for block grant money. Again, the cautionary tale with using it for a large project like the gym is that depending upon how it's structured, it could add fairly significant cost because of the wage requirement.
Yes, I understand that. Other questions? Are people comfortable with moving forward with this?
Yes.
Okay.
There was one thing I wanted to point out. The two projects that weren't funded, the committee strongly encouraged the council to consider incorporating them within the regular budget. The first is the CCAP program, and the second is a continuation of the revolving loan fund that's tied to the tenant-up-to-purchase program.
Don't think that that was in...
It's not in the memo, but it's in the matrix.
Right, I understand that, but it wasn't in the previous proposed budget, was it? The one that we passed? I'm not remembering it.
CCAP?
Right.
No, it is not.
Are there any technical reasons why the CCAP program couldn't be funded with the CBBG money? No, the committee felt that it was more appropriate to do the smaller projects in terms of providing direct benefit to people who are at risk of becoming homeless and hungry. So it's just that the funds were limited? The funds are limited. So they couldn't be stretched that far? They can't be stretched that far. They also looked at as the overall budget. If you look at the budget for the CCAP program, it's significantly larger than the block grant monies that were available. So they tried to get the biggest bang for their buck, if you will, in terms of funding, of being the primary funder or one of the larger funders for that particular project. And they felt that the percentage of the block grant funds as an overall share of the CCAP program budget, it really wasn't a significant funding source.
Yeah, they had $61,000 worth of requests for $20,000 in grant funds.
Correct. We always received more public service or community service requests than we have funded.
All right, we will move forward with that. The next item on the agenda is the, our update on the 2004 community legacy funds.
There were two aspects of the community legacy project we wanted to provide you with an update. The first is where we're at with the state regarding the restructuring of the original award. If you recall, we were here in, earlier this summer, talking about some of the options we had as far as funding. And the state agreed that we could take the original loan and split it essentially, using a significant portion of the funding as a grant, on a grant basis, and then a small amount, 77.5, as a loan with repayment terms similar to what was the original award, which was basically 0 percent amortized out over a 10-year period. I've included in your agenda packet a copy of the correspondence that we had with the state, which notes how the funds would be used based on that original scenario. Again, 215 of that, the grant funds, would be set aside for the completion of the second phase of the Carol Avenue Streetscape project, which Alana will talk about in a moment. And then the loan component of it, the 77.5, would be used to support the efforts of private property owners in the old Tacoma area to either enhance existing off-street parking that they have available for their customers, or to create additional parking. Recognizing that the creation of additional parking is somewhat problematic, but we think it's possible through the reconfiguration of existing lots and that type of thing. We've also included a project schedule. One of the concerns that the state had was that the money needs to be drawn down, and so we put together a drawdown schedule as well. One of the aspects of the project that we stressed by using the 215,000 for the Carol Avenue Streetscape project is that because of all the work that has been done on the front end of this, we've gone through and done the community meetings, we finalized design, we've done the engineering, and had the construction drawings, and all of the permits in place that we could proceed. And we have, in an effort to facilitate that process, went out for bids at the end of August. They were due this past Friday, so that once the amended community legacy agreement is finalized, then we can go ahead and execute a contract and begin the work on Carol Avenue. And now Alana's going to go over some of the material that she just distributed a moment ago to explain some of the options that we've got regarding the construction of the Carol Avenue project.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm first going to go over the bids that we received. We received four bids. The bidders and the bid amount were from Fort Myers Construction, which was 277,000 OM Contractors, which was 282,000 Ross Contracting, which was 246,000, and Santosh Incorporated, which was 242,000 dollars approximately. We also requested funds for the installation of landscaping, and that was a critical component of the project in order to be able to better estimate the total cost of the project. That will not go out to contract right now, but is, that would be part of the overall budget for the project. On the next page, there's a list of the priority elements of the Carol Avenue Commercial Streetscape project that was presented to the council on July 6th in 2004. And those include, as the first priority, tree canopy; second priority, the Westmoreland Intersection modification; third priority, extension at pinch points to make an obstruction-free six-foot sidewalk; fourth priority, reduce driveway widths; fifth, Carol Avenue bump outs at Tulip and Willow Avenues to improve ADA access; bump outs at Carol Laurel Avenue Intersection; bump outs on the commercial side and at the Carol Avenue Intersection on the church side, which was included as a design option in the design, in the construction documents. The bump out in front of 7,002 to 7,006 Carol Avenue was also included in the construction documents as a design option. I just wanted to also add that I did give you a graphic representation of the project if you need to refer to, which is the larger project. We took all of the bids and the unit amounts, and we ran them through a spreadsheet in terms of if we took off each of the different pieces of the project, what would the cost look like, and to see how much we could fit within three different option scenarios. So for option one, the goal is to keep within the $215,000 grant, $215,000 grant from the community legacy award. Option two is to construct most of the major pedestrian safety and priority elements identified by the community. And option three is to construct the streetscape as designed, with the exception of two things that we consider fairly minor and would not need to include in the project. And one of those is repainting the Century Yellow Line, and the other one is constructing a bump out that now seems less necessary due to some of the recent changes by the district. So for option one, that includes the priority elements one through five, which are the tree canopy, the Westmoreland Intersection Modification, extension at pinch points to make the sidewalk six feet wide, reducing the driveway widths, and that specifically at Savory, not so much at the Tacoma Auto Clinic. What was ended up in the final design was not as significant as we had initially asked for, so we traded that one out. The Carol Avenue bump, the bump outs at Tulip Avenue, which improve ADA access around, and also improve access around the bus station in front of the Tacoma Auto Clinic. That actually does not include the bump out. I believe, I think the bump out that this is referring to at Willow Avenue is not included, and that's the one that's actually at Carol and Laurel. That option would fall within the 250,000. That includes the contract work, the landscaping, an inspection, an inspector, and a 10 percent contingency fund. So the total cost would be 209,000. That's an estimated cost. Option two would be to construct most of the major pedestrian safety and priority elements identified by the community. And this includes everything that's in option one. And in addition to that, it includes priority six, which is the bump out on the commercial side of the Carol Avenue Laurel Avenue Intersection. And that's actually, could be an important economic improvement for the community because it expands the sidewalk space and gives the merchants alternatives to how they want to use the sidewalk area.
This is the area in front of Summer Delights.
Summer Delights and Video America.
Can you help me find that?
Sure.
Where it says, I see option one, and then I don't see the one with just six.
Option...
Number six.
It does not say, it's the first one, is the bump out at Carol Avenue Laurel Avenue Intersection, and that one is priority six. It's the first bullet point.
And then the other two, option two would not be included?
Those would also, in option two, the other two bullet points are also included, but I wanted to point out that that's a priority, that that is on the priority list.
Which one, number six?
Number, the first bullet point is priority number six, and that's included in option two. This is confusing.
But so are two other things, right?
And so are two other things. And those two other things are...
In option three as well?
Not, yes, they're in option three as well. Option three is sort of the most, the most items, and they're cumulative.
Just, just to be clear, can you point out on page four of the larger one, which ones are in option two and which are not in option two?
Okay. Option two includes the, where it says tree planter, that's in front of the Sun Trust, and it also, that bump out extends all the way in front of Summer Delights. So that's in option two.
I don't quite understand why option two has, does it have six, seven, and eight in it? Or no?
No.
If I'm understanding, it has six, and then two things that aren't on the list at all.
That there's smaller bump outs that we didn't really...
They're not in the priority elements up here at all.
Right, but they're just, they're smaller bump outs that were easy to sort of shave off.
So those other two bump outs where it says bid option and signal pole are not, don't enter into things until option three?
The one that says bid option, okay, across, right by where it is...
For the brick walk.
The brick walk, I see.
That, right, where that says bid option, that doesn't come in until three.
And how about the one over in front of 7,000 Carol?
Signal pole.
Where it says signal pole, the part that's dark red, that comes in in option two, but not in option one. Where it says bid option, that actually, this is an older PowerPoint that didn't make it through State Highway. Just to confirm you further.
Okay, so on page four, the two red places are in option two.
Yeah, are in option two.
That's right.
And then if you go to page five, everything in dark red in that page is in option one and option two and option three. What's only in option three, but not in option one or two, is where, is right across from the Westmoreland Intersection, there's a little, very small bump out, and that was also a bid option in the construction documents. So that's only in option three.
Where is it?
A bump out?
The bid option on the opposite side from the two red areas on page five.
Oh, so it's a bump out at the crosswalk.
Right, at the crosswalk.
Oh, I see.
That could be very expensive.
It's not very expensive, but it was, because we included it as a bid option, and it also was the eighth in our priority list. And these are, I mean, these are flexible, they can be switched around. It's, but it's...
Well, the thing that I'm not exactly clear on is where the additional funds would come from.
That is something, that is the decision for this evening. What we have, if you recall, is $215,000 of grant funds. When I spoke with the council about this, that, those were the basic parameters that the state had agreed to, and the council indicated that it was not interested in borrowing any money to finish off the Carol Avenue Streetscape project in its entirety. So what I had asked Alana to do was to break this down so that, one, what could we get for our $215,000 grant? And if the council elected to expand the scope of the project to allow for the whole thing to just get it over with, what additional costs would be incurred? There are a couple of options. One, to identify another funding source from within your own budget. The second would be to go back to the state and see if we can use that $77,500, not use it to create or enhance existing, to create additional parking or enhance existing parking, but to use that for, to finish off the Carol Avenue project, but it would have to be a loan and you would have to pay it back. It's, again, 0 percent interest amortized out over a 10-year period roughly. And if you wanted to finish the whole... And if you wanted to finish the whole thing out, we're looking at a gap of roughly $70,000.
Do we not see the need for the $77,000 for the parking?
I believe there is a need for it, and I believe that we can use it. The original plan was to use it for private property and treat it as a loan to the property owners.
So the property owner would pay it back?
The property owner would pay it back. And we'd create better, more accessible parking options for customers and employees in the Old Town area.
Right.
But again, it's a council decision in terms of if you want to finish the whole proj, the project off in its entirety, how you would like to finance that seventy, additional $70,000 cost.
Okay, so in this letter that you sent, it, it talks about the $215 and the $77,000 and the way that each of them will be used.
Right, and that's the proposal we talked to the council about.
Right, and it looks to me like that's already structured and sent forward to the state. So then now we would be trying to call back that money and.
It's one of the options you have. We could re-approach the state about using that $77,500 to finish off the Streetscape project. You'd still have to pay it back, but it would be just a different use of the, of the resources.
Yeah. And, and then the quotes you've gotten are, so they were clear on all the different possible permutations?
Correct.
When they made their bids?
Right.
Okay. Do we, do we know about each of these firms and their, their past work conduct and they become highly recommended or?
We actually have experience with the two lowest bidders. One of them completed the Metropolitan Branch Trail, and the other one, while we have, we've worked with some of the people from their company when they worked for a different company, and they worked on the Laurel Avenue Streetscape project. So we do, they're known quantities in that sense, and they, both companies do have a considerable number of projects under their, under their, as references in terms of, so they, they completed a fair number of projects that are somewhat related.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I guess a couple of questions first. I just wondered, have these designs been vetted with the property owners and the community at this point?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
It's a fairly long process.
I realize that, but I just.
I, I think Terry makes a really good point because we're right now going back and redoing some things at 7118 Carroll, and it, you know, for everything we try to keep everyone informed and make sure they're at the table, sometimes we, you know, don't succeed. So it is something worth taking a final look at.
The, just as an observation with that, we have met with the Westmoreland area community organization and presented the proposal to them, and they were sent electronic versions of the improvements on Westmoreland, which is a, is a big priority for that particular neighborhood. Alana has also sent out letters to the businesses that would be affected by some of the work because while access will not be, people will still be able to get access to their establishment, there will be work being done in, in the immediate area. And everyone has been given an opportunity to come in, check out the plans, give us a call if they have any questions. They haven't heard anything back from anybody, but that'll be a continuing, that's just part of the whole outreach that they have to do in terms of keeping people up to date on what's going on.
Right. I, you know, I'm really glad to hear that. My first reaction, looking at the plans, is wow, you know, great job, and I really thank you for the, for the work on this. I think it, it looks great. I mean, my, you know, my second reaction is to say, gee, we ought to just fund it all. You know, Billy is going to be such an improvement to that neighborhood. But my third reaction is, where do we get the money? So we have to talk about that. I don't know that I'm prepared to try to pick and choose from this plan that we just received tonight, but I think it looks great. I really am impressed with the, the plans you have, especially around the Westmoreland interchange there. I think you've done an excellent job, and I thank you for that. Yeah, I, I would like to see us complete this work, but I, Barb, you're the ones with, you're the one that has the purse, so you've got to tell us where that money would come from.
Grow it on trees.
We may have to make some, some choices on these options, and maybe there's some variations that we can think about, but it's hard to shoot from the hip on that. We'll have to take a look at it, spend some time going through the plans, at least I will.
If, if the city manager has any, any thoughts or places money would come from, I would be pleased to hear them, but I'm not going to put you on the spot this day.
Well, you know, I don't know if you've gotten an update on your tax revenues for the year. I mean, we're not talking about an insignificant amount of money, but it's also not the, the largest amount we've seen for any of our projects.
What I have been looking at, Councilmember Simmons, is obviously the audited figures for last year are not done. I have been, just from my own information, sort of going back and looking at where we thought we would be as of June 30th compared to where it appears we are with the unaudited results. Come on, first blush, if you will, as often happens, income taxes are one of the most difficult revenue sources to predict. It's been, was very common in my tenure here where we'll, we work with the state and we do a best guess estimate, and then we end up getting, thankfully, a surprise check after the fiscal year ends. It does appear that has happened again, and when we get those, they're usually in the neighborhood of, truthfully, several hundred thousand dollars. There's still, and that happened last year, I say we work closely with the state in developing our projections for the year. Last year we got a check, I believe it came in in July, of $200,000 and some thousand dollars. This year, it appears to be running higher. I say it's still a little bit early, the expenditure side is a little bit more difficult to sort of reconcile until some adjustments are made. I think if the council is going to be discussing this further next week, I might have a little bit, better picture. But at this juncture, it does appear that we may have ended last year better than what we had anticipated.
I think this kind of expenditure is, would be an appropriate use of any, if you will, found money, in that it is something that addresses an area that we've wanted to improve, and it's a, it's a plan that I think deserves special attention just because of the quality of the work that was put into it.
Well, and I certainly would agree that the community has discussed this, they've put out their desires, the staff has listened and implemented or designed those desires, and it's actually looking pretty affordable, given these bids. So I wouldn't want to foreclose completing the project. I think it's certainly in our best interest, both economically and for improved quality of life, for that area to look as, as nice as possible. But then, I, I do want to make sure that we are living within our means, and so option one is the, one that to me seems most doable at this time with possibly some added features as we see whether the contingency gets used up and, and whether or not we have that plus about $5,000 extra.
The, it might be worthwhile doing as the city manager suggested and carrying this discussion over till next week when she has a sense of what additional funding might be available. I think it would, I also think it would be advantageous to do the whole thing if we can, particularly since if you break a project like this, this up into several pieces and do them at different times, it ends up being more expensive than if you did it all at once.
Yes, it would be, if you were to do, if you were to face this, you would have to add an additional cost for mobilization and that.
And also costs for increases in construction costs, as we've discovered in other instances. And so it might be worthwhile. I would agree with Councilmember Austin Lane that I don't want to see us go into monies that are already budgeted. But if it's true that there may be additional revenues that we hadn't anticipated from, you're talking about income taxes or property tax revenues?
There are actually several sources. If you remember, this is going back several months, I gave you sort of a preliminary financial report way back in probably July, I believe it was. And there were a number of revenue sources at that time that we knew for a fact, these are cash receipts, so there's no accruing back to the prior year. That came in higher than what we had anticipated. Part of it was inspection fees, coming from rental housing licenses, recreation revenues were coming in higher than we had projected. The income taxes is something that, truthfully, we only learned of fairly recently since that preliminary financial report. So I would say general, there are a few areas where things were underperforming, but there were a number of areas that did better than expected.
So it might, it might be worthwhile to allow the city manager, I mean, what's, what's our timeframe on this? When does this, when does the council have to make a decision?
We have a couple of issues. One is the construction season. The other is, I wouldn't encourage anyone to sign a contract until we get it formally approved at the state level as far as using the money for this project. So what we were anticipating was having you consider an ordinance with that condition, that a contract not be executed until we'd receive formal notification from the state. And we were hoping to do that next week, but I don't think a week, an additional week would be a problem, do you, with the construction?
It depends on how best the state knows, but I mean, it's a, a week is a week.
But since it's, since it's already, at this point, it's already October, and since, I mean, you're talking about paving, isn't that, that basically into November is all you can do? I mean, can we finish?
Because the, because of the way that the bid was written, we asked for the construction to, to occur in, in the late fall, early winter, basically between, in the first two months after the contract was awarded. And so we received work schedules, which means that the contractors figured in the cost of additives for their pavement to harden under colder conditions.
But there's no asphalt available in the winter, I thought.
We're not doing any asphalt.
Right, but I mean, but don't you have to, when you're doing bump outs, you cut up the street?
Yes.
And then you have to fill in the holes with something?
From what I understand, it's possible to do this in the winter. The only item that's not, that would not occur in the winter would be thermoplastic and painting, because you do need certain temperatures for those to adhere to the asphalt. And I'm not sure about the asphalt, and I can look into that and make sure, but from what I understood from our conversations with engineers earlier in this project, it was, those were the only issues. And the other, the other item that would come later probably would be the tree planting, that would probably come in early spring, or late winter, early spring.
Where, can I just follow up with the city manager? How, how much information do you think you would have if we carried this over till next week? Would that give you a chance to get enough information for the council to make a decision or not?
I believe so. The one thing, and the revenue side is, is fairly clear. The thing that I need to talk to the finance director about is the expenditure side because there's some accruals that go, happen during the audit process and adjustments that are made, particularly on trying to split up the payroll, if you will, between the two fiscal years. I would think I'd have fairly good information by next week.
Okay, nice. So Terry Sando.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on the, on the paving. Is, does this money include repaving of those streets, or is, is that already scheduled to be done in our, that's a state highway?
That's a state highway.
Okay, so what we would, what is included in here is just patch work?
Right.
Around any of the bump outs or things that we did?
There would, there would be a soft hide around the bump out, and then that area between the curb extension, or between the curb and the existing asphalt would then be backfilled with asphalt and rolled smooth.
Okay. So it would be basically a patch job until the state?
Yes, but it would be a much nicer patch than the WSSC patches.
Well, and we've seen what, what results from streetscaping on the 7100 block. So it's, I mean, the state hasn't come in and repaved that. Is any of that indicative of what we could expect on the 7,000 block?
When we've talked to State Highway about repaving, they have said that they've looked at their schedule and said, oh, Carroll Avenue is on the neighborhood, wait, what can it, neighborhood transportation. The program that's, that's now called Community Enhancements Program, that that street has been on for a long time, or the highway has been on for a long time, usually includes repaving. And so because it's on that list as an on hold project, it won't be considered for resurfacing, which me, and we are in conversations with State Highway about the fact that, you know, it is in that limbo area and we'd like it. There are other items on Carroll Avenue that we would like to see them address, similar to what the city has addressed. So it's not all bad that it's on that list, but it does mean that we have to work with them regarding where, where that street is going.
So that means that they won't pave it under their regular repaving program because it's under community whatever they call it now?
Right.
But there's no money for community whatever, so they won't pave it under that program either?
Let's hear there was more money, but not enough. But I, I think, I think it is being recognized that that is an important program to the community.
Just to let you know where I am at this point, I'm, I'm in agreement with Councilmember Austin Lane that absent assurances on additional money, I'm, I'm comfortable with option one. I would kind of withhold final judgment till the city manager comes back with some information next week, but I'm, I'm starting from a position of being comfortable only with option one with existing money.
Can I ask when we expect the state to respond to your letter?
I'm hoping to hear from them this week or next.
Would it, would it make sense for us to keep this, it's on the agenda for next week as a resolution and under the regular meeting agenda, but it makes sense to keep it on the agenda as a resolution, only we won't know the content, we won't know the content of the resolution until you resolve those questions? Or should we put it on for another work session discussion? What's, I mean, how rushed are we, I guess, is the question?
Do the bids?
I would, I would rather have it as another work session.
Yeah, I don't believe there would be a problem.
Okay, all right, we'll do that.
Is there a time limit on those bids?
Yeah, aren't we moving into winter? So I would think the sooner we, well, sign the contract and get them started on the work and use these funds, but that's why I'm kind of concerned about proceeding without state approval of how we're proposing to structure the money.
Ideally, this will all happen at the same time, but that doesn't mean that that will actually take place. You could do an ordinance with blanks.
Yeah. If I can just ask for clarification, I think one of the things that we started out talking about is, in a perfect world, I guess, if the state were amenable, how strongly the council feels about taking a portion of the community legacy funds and leaving that still in place, if you will, to either expand or create new parking opportunities. I know that's probably a difficult question for the council to answer in the absence of, I guess, knowing a little bit more about the finances, but is that an important component for the council of the use of the community legacy funds? Because if staff is aware that you want to leave that piece in place, then truthfully, the other options are going to kind of flow from that in terms of what my financial analysis shows and where that leaves us relative to the Streetscape project, so.
Well, I'd be happy to weigh in on that.
Go ahead.
The, the parking is very important. The thing that I would need a little bit more information about is whether or not that will be going forward shortly. So there's a couple of approvals that, that we might be lacking right now to let us know, you know, what's the best use of this money. If, if the parking improvements are going to go forward in a way that's consistent with how the state wants this money drawn down in the next 12 months, then great, and that's still got a, still got a priority with us. But if the money's going to evaporate and we've not used the $77,000 in the time allotted, that's, you know, that would also affect it.
I think my sense would be that we started this off as a project to increase parking in the commercial area, and I know the people, I'm sure you're hearing from the same people I am, that they still consider that a very important priority, and I'd like to keep that in there somewhere. I think Joy's point about. that in there somewhere. I think Joy's point about if we can't use it up within that period of time, then that makes a difference. The other concern that I have is that it was also structured initially so that we would not end up being responsible for that cost. And if it ends up that we're using it for something that doesn't produce income, then unless we can cover it with some other source of funding, then we are going to be responsible for putting that cost in the budget, and I'm not, at this point, willing to do that. So I think that if it's continuing to be a loan, I would rather keep it as parking. I guess I would rather keep it as parking regardless, because I think that the parking is important, and that is something that people wanted us to do. Only if there is absolutely no way we can create any additional parking with any feasibility within the period of time, would I consider it for anything else. But I think we told people we'd do something about parking, and I think we should do something about parking.
And I would agree with that last point.
Terry?
I would agree with Mayor Porter on that. I was just learning from our community center experience, I wondered if there is a drop dead date on these bids that we've received. I mean, I don't know that the construction season is as important, you know, to make a decision this week or next week.
Sixty days.
But how long are those bids good for?
I think, I believe that they're good for 60 days. I think actually where the construction season is tighter than the bid period.
Okay. I mean, I don't see that starting construction three weeks from now, is that different than, or, you know, delaying our decision for three weeks?
No, I think we should, so I guess, going to the question about, if I'm understanding, Barb, she's talking about there's two different issues here. One is, do we want to keep the allocation of funding between Carol, the Carol Avenue improvements and the parking the way it is? And I'm hearing, if I'm understanding, that the council does want to do that.
Unless, unless you can't stand.
Unless there's some real hangup with the parking. But then going back to that question, I think that my, my understanding is that the council would like another opportunity to discuss this whole thing, including the funding issues, in a work session discussion before proceeding.
Right.
And it sounds like it'll give you guys another week to try and deal with the state highway authority for doing it, as well as the okay from the funding agency to allocate the funds that way.
Alana just pointed out or reminded me, the other challenge we've got, and I still think we could do it, though it might be kind of tricky, is that the holidays are coming up?
Yes.
And the businesses prefer not to have it really messy outside their shops when they've got people coming to the holiday shop.
Particularly when there's that event going on at the attendance church.
Oh, I don't want to talk about that, frankly.
Well, how long?
We'll have to sit down and see how we might be able to structure this so it minimizes the impact for them.
Is there any reason this construction has to be done this fall, if it gets approved?
I believe there was some timeline by which the state wanted the funds expended. I think with the council's concurrence, and obviously staff will be meeting with the mayor tomorrow to kind of finalize the agenda, I think we have a clear sense of sort of where you would like to get. I guess if you could give me a few hours in the morning before the mayor shows up for the agenda to kind of talk to staff a little bit, see what kind of information we can gather. We obviously want to make sure you have the information you need to make the best decision for the community, but I think it's obviously in everyone's best interest, if at all possible, to keep this process moving so that construction could begin. So I guess if we could just leave the door a little bit open tonight so I can talk to the staff in the morning and see if we believe we'll be in a position to give you good information so that you could proceed with awarding a bid, if at all possible.
Okay. The mayor sets the agenda.
Can I just ask if construction can start in January to avoid the Old Town holiday season?
We will do as much as we can to disturb, to create as little disturbance as possible. We have to talk to the vendors and stuff. Frankly, Christmas scares me for the holidays as far as doing construction work down there. But I think we've talked about it, and we think that we can, it can be done.
I think you need to work for the business community on that.
Definitely. And I would think if we were getting approvals right now and then awarding the contract in, you know, the next month, then as long as they understood that construction couldn't start until January, wouldn't that be fair to the bidders? I think so. Once again, I think the issue that I need to talk to staff a little bit more is the deadline by which the state wanted the funds expended, and I think, as Sarah alluded to, I think the, what we're all trying to juggle is not impeding the businesses' ability during one of their best times of year, making sure we're meeting the state deadlines, and that we actually have sufficient time to actually construct the improvements. Those things are somewhat in conflict with one another.
The state may be flexible, though.
The state's been very good about many things, but they're starting to press the issue about drawing the money down, so.
This is 2004 money and this is 2006, they're...
Well, can I just add one caveat? I think the Westmoreland crosswalk is probably far enough away from the Old Town hub that maybe that part could go forward as soon as possible with disruption to the rest of Old Town minimized through the holiday season, but I'd really like to see that fixed and fixed well before we get into any kind of snowy weather. So I don't know if that's out of trouble, or...
We will go back through, we think it can be done without creating a disturbance for everyone, and we'll have more information.
But there's also the distance on Westmoreland along behind.
I want to know if it's like...
Oh, certainly don't want to create a more difficult situation. Okay, so I will talk to the city manager, and we will see, based on the information that she has tomorrow, whether we think we can move forward with a resolution next week or whether we'll have another discussion of it. And we'll go ahead, and I'll go ahead and put it on the agenda as depending on the amount of information she's able to get.
And hopefully we can do a resolution so we don't have to go through this all again.
Actually, it'd be an ordinance, but, yes. And it's just a single reading.
Because it's expending money that's already budgeted. All right, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
In a way.
Impressed.